Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to open the August eighth, two thousand twenty-three Bethel Planning and Zoning Meeting. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is the Kansas one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
As usual, I would start with the personal electronic device policies. Please note for the record that any personal electronic devices used by the commission members or for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town's website. First item on the agenda this evening. I can't hear them. Oh, sorry. I'm Ken Stevens' chair. If we can have the folks on Zoom introduce themselves, please.
Bob Legnard, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Penny Kessler, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Kenny Corson, Commissioner.
Deputy Lieutenant Kitty Grant, Commissioner.
Dave's muted.
Paul Shandley.
Oh, Paul. I didn't see you there.
Paul Shandley, Commissioner. Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. Sorry for the delay.
That's all right. Thank you. Staff?
Beth, Beth Kabagda, planning director, and I'd like to introduce your ultimate Amanda Martinez. Martinez, who is new to our staff, is our secretary.
Welcome.
And Dave McCollum, Land Use Coordinator.
Thank you, Dave. Peter's waiting anxiously. First item on the agenda, J A R Associates continue the public hearing for one eighty-five Grassy Plain Street.
You've got a lot to do tonight. I don't want to waste too much time.
Before you get started, I'm just going to recuse myself from this.
Thank you, Paul.
I'm going to stand over here because my tablet isn't charged, so we're stealing power. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at two seventy-five Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use Conservation Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and property owner J A R Associates LLC, represented by Anthony and Richard O'Jillies, being in the second row here. We were before you two weeks ago and presented the bulk of our changes to the site plan to respond to engineering comments received. We've received additional comments since then, but there were thankfully only four of them. They were very minor in nature, except for one, which I'll have Michelle McCully go through in a moment. And that resulted in us doing a little bit of plan revision to accommodate that one comment, but I think we've been able to deal with it. The Wetlands Commission acted last night and approved the application, so hopefully when Michelle is done, we can close this hearing and you can move to a decision tonight. David, can you? He's got it up. Michelle, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle McCully and Artell Engineering, and she'll go through the minor changes that we made to the plan.
David, could you go to sheet four A?
Michelle for the record.
Sorry, Michelle, Mark McCully with Artell Engineering. David, there is newer plans. Do you have the newer plans?
This is what was in the P N Z drive for tonight's meeting.
Eight three twenty-three. I had emailed them on Monday.
Okay, let me see if I can find them.
Does she stay have in front of them?
Have an eight three twenty-three date on them. There's three revisions on it.
There's further revisions besides the eight threes?
What?
There's a further revision besides eight three?
No.
No. Well, they have the plans in front of them.
Yes, well, we want to get them up on Zoom.
On the computer were the last seven three ones.
Okay, I'm sorry. I am like that's where I was looking. I'll have them up shortly.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
What sheet do you want them to go to?
Um, four A.
Four A.
Is this coming through for everybody?
Yes.
Sir?
Yeah.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
That one's good. So the one comment that we received from the town consultant engineer was to provide a, I believe he said, two hundred and eighty feet site distance looking west, I believe it's west, from the driveway entrance for building number three. So we, I analyzed the three hundred foot just to make sure. So by analyzing the three hundred foot, I had to provide some additional grading to pull the salt back a little bit, and I was able to get the adequate site distance. So that was the only grading change to the plans. If you could go to sheet three B, David. Um, based on a couple of comments we've seen from the Wetland Commission, we made the island for building two on this side here a little larger, so I eliminated two parking spaces. So we still have the required two hundred and seventy-eight spaces. We just went from two eighty to two seventy-eight, which is required. So we made this island a little larger, and we also provide.
Would you mind describing where that is, Michelle? I can't see where you're pointing to.
Okay, so it's on the east side of the building, David, to the right of the building. So right in that area, yep. So I eliminated two spots in there to make that those two end islands larger. And then I also added a wetland placard by Wetland Flag eleven, so that if the placards, so they don't disturb the wetland in that area. That was the only site plan changes that we made to the plans.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Welcome.
When we received the engineering comments, we had referred it to Joe Valskis, our traffic engineer, and he said, there's nothing to worry about, but we made the change anyway, and we now have the site distance requested by the reviewing engineer. So that's all that we have. We think we're done with our presentation on this application, and we hope we are able to close the hearing and remember a decision. Thank you.
This time I'll open it to the public. If there's any questions, please come forward, state your name and your address, and address your comments to the commission. Any comments from those on Zoom?
I have a, I see a hand raised by Paula Antolini, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paula.
Good evening, Commission. Paula Antolini, Jacobs Lane, nineteen Jacobs Lane. I have a question. The the map, the layout isn't on the screen anymore, but at the bottom right, it's another building besides the big building. Am I reading that correctly? The one on the bottom right. Okay, is that to be built right at the entrance of the park? Is that sort of right on top of where you enter?
I'm sorry, normally we wait for all.
Well, I don't know who can answer this. Can the commission answer? I don't know who's supposed to.
Your questions will answer them.
Well, okay, I'll finish my question. My question concerns this building and how it would appear from the road when it's right. It seems to be right against the curb and, you know, I don't know what the distance is, but it's right at the entrance. And is this a one-story or a two-story building? And what is it going to look like at the entrance? That's my question.
The one-story building.
Are there any other comments from members of the public?
There's no other hands raised at this time. David, do you have anybody else with their hands raised? I can't see any.
I'm not seeing any other raised hands at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's up for the front building.
Mr. Chairman, in order to expedite the comment section of the hearing, if you look at the map of the overall site, and it shows the proximity of the building in the front, at least fifty-four feet from the property line along Grassy Plain Street, and it looks to be at least another twenty feet. So I would say it's approximately seventy feet from Grassy Plain Street. And in regards to the entrance of Francis Park Park, I would say it's approximately, I think that's fifty, that's a sixty, seventy-six, eighty feet from the pavement.
So to respond to the question beyond what Beth Kabagda has just said is yes, it is at the entrance to the park. It complies with all setbacks of the regulations. At a prior public hearing, when we presented this application in full, we submitted architectural rendering of the proposed building, and it happened to be sitting over in the corner. So I can refresh the commission's recollection with this board. I have no idea where the file is, so I don't know if it can be brought up, but I'll turn towards the camera. And then I'll do a little twirl. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the public?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for the second part of the question to be answered, which was, what is this going to look like from the street?
I just showed a picture of what it was look like from the street.
I couldn't see it from here. You could hold it up to the camera, I guess.
I did hold it up to the camera, but I don't know if we had the image in one of the prior files or not.
Hold it up to the camera. Please, sir.
It was visible when it was held up.
Can't tell if it's being held up through the camera, but maybe.
There we go. That's as good as I can get.
Okay, so it is pretty much at the opening. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any questions from the commission?
I'm good to say that I went through the January, excuse me, the July eleventh meeting and the July twenty-fifth meeting. And I went through all the files. I thank you for answering all the questions that our technical advisors had asked, and I think you did to my satisfaction. And I'm very happy with that.
Any questions from staff?
No.
Comments?
I'm just glad we're getting property invested.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
You. Next on the agenda is K N P Associates LLC, whom which I am going to review myself and to you take over the meeting.
This was a public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission is having a public hearing on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M. In conference room D of the Minneapolis Center, one Stool Street, Bethel, Connecticut, to hear the following. K N P Associates LLC, a property located at forty-two Plum Trees Road, according to affordable housing application under section eight thirty-two of the Connecticut State Statutes. The proposal consists of nine additional homes preserving existing dwelling and by age restricted to fifty-five years or older. The property can be found in the assessors' record as map fifty block sixty-three and lot fifteen. The link to review the materials can be found on the town website. Public may send comics via regular mail and email to landuse@bethelct.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building, Ken Stevens, Chairman.
Thank you. I should have, I'm sorry, I did not announce the K N P Associates LLC, eight thirty G Affordable Housing, ten units, fifty-five, and all the forty-two, forty-two Plum Trees.
Mr. Awesome. No, Madam. No, I'm sorry. Since my report isn't available, I'll read it out loud. So fellow members of the commission and the public can hear. For the public hearing, forty-two Plum Trees Road, property is located within the R ten zone, consists of a single-family home on one point four five eight acres. The applicant proposes to add an additional nine units on Connecticut State, under Connecticut State Statute eight dash thirty G. The nature of the development is similar to ten and a half Nashville Road extension, consisting of small caves with two bedrooms and an open unfinished floor area. One bedroom is located on the first floor. Decks or patios are provided with each unit. Although an affordable housing development under the statute, the developer is limiting the purchase to those to fifty-five years or older, under the thirty percent requirement, three units will be income restricted. Staff has worked with the developer over the last six months, reviewing several proposals and consulting with the town's historian, Patrick Wild, on the history and attributes of the existing home and the desire to preserve and bring it back to its former prominent appearance. The developer then took the recommendations of staff and several other departments and incorporated them into the application before you this evening. We have several pieces of correspondence, which is in the drive. A report from the fire marshal dated seven twenty-one twenty-three. Our consulting engineer, S L R Todd Ritchie, eight three twenty-three. Public Utilities, V L S six eight twenty-three. We also have some public correspondence in the drive, which is Marietta Humanyonpor. On Whittlesey Tribe, Brian Walters, on Monah Hill Road. Staff will provide an updated memorandum of the history of affordable housing for the next meeting. Staff would also recommend review of the Affordable Housing Plan adopted in two thousand and twenty-two for reading purposes. The hearing should be continued to receive final comments from the consulting engineer, health department, and please.
Good evening again. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office in Bethel at two seventy-five Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner and applicant, A and P Associates LLC, represented by Mr. Stevens Marco, sitting here in the front row. Last, he's running. I'd like to submit a copy of the letters that we sent to the property owners and the delivery report for sending for their. The public hearing was opened at the last meeting of the commission, but continued to tonight to resolve a notice question, which I trust has been resolved. David, can you call this property up on the Google Maps, please? Thank you. So the property is located at the intersection of Plum Trees Road, which I'm indicating in the center of the screen, running in an up-down direction, at Whittlesey Drive, the end of the school complex. The eastern boundary of the property is the former road right away before Whittlesey was relocated to its current traffic light location. And the new Whittlesey Drive location has a sidewalk that essentially runs all the way down to the corner. The parcel contains one point four five eight acres of land. And it's currently a proven single-family home that dates from about eighteen twenty, as well as a barn outbuilding. Our original intention was to demolish both of these structures. I've been in that barn, and it's extremely scary. But upon consultation with Patrick Wild, the municipal historian, we were convinced by him to retain the existing home due to its prominence on the site and historic importance in Bethel. The property is located in an R ten zoning district. And we've proposed a ten-unit common interest community of for-sale homes. To meet the zoning requirements, we've proposed this application as an affordable housing project, which meets the criteria of the state statutes, which you know as eight thirty G. Of the ten units, two will be affordable to people making eighty percent of the state median income, and one will be affordable to persons making sixty percent of the state median income. Again, these are for-sale units, so the person who buys the unit will have to qualify when they purchase it. And when they sell it, it will be at that price level based on the calculation provided by the state for forty years. We filed a draft affordability plan with our application. The text of the plan has been reviewed by staff on many occasions for other projects that basically use the same form. And that plan designates unit two as a sixty percent unit and units three and five as eighty percent units, and I'll show you those on the plans when I call them up. The units are basically identical to each other on the exterior to the market rate units, the affordable and market rates are nearly identical. And most interior features will be the same as required by the statute, which requires a similar fit and finish of the units. As you're all very familiar, an affordable housing application is subject to the Affordable Housing Appeals Act, which provides that upon an appeal from a denial of an application, the commission bears the burden of proving that the denial was necessary to protect interests in public health and safety, which outweighed the need for affordable housing. This means, of course, that the zoning regulations which govern the property need not be strictly complied with in an affordable housing application such as this one. For this application, we nevertheless decided to hew pretty closely to the regulations for the R ten district. The major deviation is density. We think we could have built six homes as of right in the district, and we've proposed ten. We've proposed this as a common interest community, whereas the underlying district would have required individual lots for each home. We stuck with the setbacks as best we could. We meet the coverage requirements, et cetera. So there's a couple of minor intrusions to the setback, which I was going to point out, which we're pointing out in the engineering later as well. But as a result of all this, we do not see any health and safety issues, let alone any that would outweigh the need for affordable housing or would require denial by the commission. As noted, this will be a community of for-sale homes, but in addition, it will be a community for, that that could be called housing for older persons. That's a defined term in federal statutes. Federal statutes, the Fair Housing Act essentially bans discrimination against a number of different classes of people, one of which is discrimination based on familial status, which includes discrimination based on age and discrimination based on whether or not you have children. So this is general blanket prohibition in Fair Housing Act. But there's also an exception to that discrimination, which is housing for older persons. That is, you can discriminate if you're doing a project, which is housing for older persons. So what is that? There's two types. A community that is one hundred percent occupied by people who are sixty-two and older. That's one form of legalized discrimination. And then the second is at least eighty percent of the community is occupied by at least one person who is fifty-five years old. And that's the category we're going to fall into is we're doing a fifty-five and older community. It's important to keep in mind that only one person residing in the house needs to meet the age requirement. So a married couple where one is fifty-six and the other is forty-two, it's just fine. It meets the criteria. It also means that children are not and cannot be permitted. I'm sure everybody knows somebody who's fifty-five and older who has a kid who's still in high school. Very much within their own possibility, but so we can't prohibit children in the units. It is only required by federal statute to meet the terms of the exemption that eighty percent of the units be occupied by one person. So technically, two of them could be sold to somebody who didn't meet the criteria at all. We're not going to do that. We're going to put a hundred percent of the units. With this restriction, we think it makes for a better community, better marketing for all the units. David, can you call up the architectural drawings, please?
David, in forty-two, yeah, you saw the presentation, applicant's presentation folder.
Yeah, I believe I'm calling up the right.
So I'm just going to try to go through these quickly because they're all fairly similar. But in a community that's designed for fifty-five and plus, there are a couple of important criteria for the units that are essentially designed for accessibility. So it includes grade level access to the units. First floor master bedroom. So if you look right here, this is unit one, which is the first unit you'll come to as you drive in. And we have a living room, a garage, and a first floor master bedroom and master bath. Generally, we don't have a shower with a little lip on it rather than a full tub, et cetera. So these units are not designed to be ADA compliant. There's no requirement for that in a development of this size. But they're all designed in a way that they don't require structural changes to become ADA compliant. So for instance, the kitchen cabinets could be replaced with shorter cabinets. That they, there could be handlebars in the bathroom. We put the structural elements in to make sure that's taken care of. So easily convertible to somebody who needs that type of unit. Scroll down one page, David. The second floor of the units has a has a bedroom and a bonus room. Important that the definition of a bedroom generally includes a closet, and so the bonus room doesn't have a closet. It's not intended to be a bedroom. The person who lives there could ask that it be finished as a bedroom if they want, but that's not the intention as we applied for it. So most people will use that as a guest bedroom and an office of some kind. The floor plan that you're looking at is one of the two structures that have three units in it. This is units one, two, and three. David, can you scroll down one page, please? Architectural rendering of what these units look like joined together, and I've got some photographs of Nashville Village to show you exactly what they look like because they're the same units. Scroll down, please. These are units four, five, and six, functionally the same as one, two, and three, so you can just scroll down. One more. And again. So one, two, three are in one building, four, five, six are in the second building, and then seven, eight, and seven, nine, and ten are all single-family homes that are not attached, but they've got the same basic layout as the ones that are attached. We have not prepared any plans for the existing home. We're just going to renovate it as is. It should stay the same on the outside. Maybe some cleanup. David, can you call up the photograph page, please, the photograph file? So these photographs are from Nashville Village. I don't know if anybody has seen Nashville Village, but it's a very similar type of community. It's a little over an acre in size and eleven units. Some in blocks of three, some in blocks two, or of course, standing on their own. My understanding for everybody I've spoken to who lives there absolutely loves it. It's like a little, a little community that's been formed over there. So you can see how the units look from the outside. Scroll down one page, please. We're going to go quickly through these different colors siding. Some were white, some were a darker grayish color. Little bit more of a close-up. Every unit has a garage. And then the single-family units, standing on their own, look like that, kind of in New England Cape. One more page, I think. Wait, when at the end? We submitted this application in early June. We just got our engineering review last week on Thursday. And one of the comments is that we should submit a landscaping plan. We've hired Abigail Adams of A Two Land Consulting to prepare a landscaping plan. We don't think it's necessary for this stage of the process. We'll have one. We'll implement it. It will look good. But there aren't any health and safety reasons associated with the landscaping plan. Those of you who have driven past forty-two Chestnut and Nashville, you can see the style of robust landscaping that we'll be putting in. Doug DeVesta has been hard at work for the last several days responding to the engineering comments. He submitted a set of revised plans today, which I think you have in front of you, as well as a response letter. We believe these comments were almost entirely of a technical nature. They don't affect the design of the development, the layout, the overall project at all, just just the details. So our hope was that if the town's reviewing engineer reviewed these modifications and had additional comments, we could address those as we progress the plans for our construction set. Fire marshal approved the design. One of the engineering comments was to add some curbing along the entrance drive between units one and seven. And we disagreed with that comment because we think it would affect fire truck access, so we have not made that change. We did. No, we did make that change. Sorry, I should have told you. Thought we under the bus there, Doug. Well, I'm going to stop talking and then turn it over to Doug. That's what it said here on my notes, turn it over to Doug. Doug DeVesta of DeVesta Civil Engineering, which is project engineer.
Good evening. My name is Doug DeVesta, that's my name here, represent the applicant. David, if you can go to S E two, three. This is, this is the site plan that we're talking about. Again, you've got plum trees on the top, you've got whittley tree on the side. Plum trees on the top, you got Whitley train on the side there, onto the eat to the. To the north, we're entering the property off of. Willsey Road coming into the property. And then we're having the 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 three units and the total six units along the easterly side, and then coming down. The main house is in the center there. We have new buildings on each side of it. We are raising the existing detached garage and the pool that's there. And leaving the house as is, we're cutting off the driveway that goes, the existing driveway that goes into plum tree. Road and then that would just be graded out. If you can go to S C. Okay, stay there, stay stay for a second, Dave. Go back to S C. In terms of parking. We are in the R ten zones. We follow the R ten parking requirements. We've got required twenty-three parking spaces, which includes visitor spaces. We're providing thirty spaces, which include. Nine spaces in the garage. So we have nine, nine garages and those had included in that thirty spaces that we've got, and the rest are going to be on surface. And we have one handicap space at unit number four. It can be any of the units, but we just chose, you know, four for the handicap. Accessible unit for this project. But again, it could be done at any any unit we have, but as you mentioned, they're all. They can all be changed into ADA compliant if need to be. Garbage and recycling. Will be stored, the individual containers stored in the garages and then be taken out for curbside pickup. And as Peter mentioned, which I didn't tell him about, we need to change to. Was the curbing along the entrance way. Todd had recommended that we put a little island here at number two and at number seven. So traffic can come in and push it up into the center there. I looked at it. It really didn't do, didn't change the. The movements for the even fire trucks coming in, the fire truck can come in, back in and back out and go out headfirst. So. Didn't say that being an issue, but I think it does get a little better character and better flow for the vehicles into the into the site itself. Can we go to S C? Grading, go to five. One more up, right there. Okay, right there. Okay. So in terms of stormwater management. The site pretty much drains from east to west towards Plum Tree. There is a little bit of a swell on the easterly portion of the property. Slide it up, please. There's a little bit of a between this retaining wall we're proposing and the easterly property line. There is a little bit of swell that drains down. Towards the the high school entrance way. So that's staying as a natural buffer area. I know there was a comment that they wanted to create a swell in there, but there's this existing swell there. We did these kind of swells in there. We had to remove trees and then remove a a natural buffer that we have between our property and the neighboring property. Terms of drainage, we've got drainage running down along the edge to along the edge of the buildings to a catch basin at the entrance way. Which are good down and tie into a drainage system that will die into a detention system that's loaded, located along the Wesley property line. At Plum Trees. We've designed that, we designed a drainage system for the two to one hundred year design storm as required by the town. So we're showing reduction in all storms provided. There was a comment regarding our detention system that's behind the retaining wall. We're going to make that watertight system. And so therefore, no water will infiltrate into the ground. The northern piece there will have exfiltration into the into the ground. On percolation tests were done and deep test holes were done and so is suitable for to handle that infiltration. In terms of our modeling, we we revised our model and that will go to the peer review. For additional comments, but we did not take into consideration any type of. Exfiltration through the system. So we're just using a very conservative approach to the the stormwater management here. We are providing a hydrodynamic separator as recommended by Todd. Before it goes into our detention system, there will be sewer and water connections out to the driveway. So we have a water line comes into the site at an eight inch line, tie into a hydrant, and then once it gets past that point, then it'll go on to a four inch line. That was recommended by the P U C and the sanitary sewer line will tie into an to the existing sanitary line that's out by the driveway. I like to hand it out tonight in front of you is the app, the revised plan that we did, I've done before. From our comments we got on their last Thursday. Also like to go through the comments that we received. And also in your package there tonight are the we are our written responses. To the P U C comments dated six, eight, twenty-three. And pretty much what they were, we originally had the sewer and water coming in off of Plum Tree, coming up the existing driveway and then branching off. P U C recommended a bring it into the driveway and then tie off of that way. So therefore, the existing house, which is connected. To the sanitary sewer and water will be disconnected and then hooked into our new new drain, our new stormwater, excuse me. Our sanitary sewer and water main. Calculations we provided was for nineteen hundred gallons a day, the sewage. That was revised based on comments from the P U C down to sixteen hundred and eighty gallons allocation. So that was approved by P U C. Then we talked about the water lines changing. We missed a connection of unit ten, which is here to the water, to a water service that we tied that into it. And then we had a a a drop manhole over the existing sewer and he did not want that to have a direct connection. So that was revised as well. Regarding the peer review comments dated eight, three, which is last Thursday. Their their comments, as Peter mentioned, were pretty much technical in orient and and and. In nature, which we've addressed, we addressed them correctly and properly for for Todd to review again. And then we affect the overall design of the project, except for again, that little driveway change in here, and we did lose one parking space that was at. Number seven. It went from thirty-one spaces down to thirty spaces. So we're still well above what's required in terms of parking. So again, we we think that these comments are in technical in in nature, so they we could get approval and then work with Todd to get these things. Worked out in terms of engineering wise. But again, we provided details of spot elevation that the handicap accessibility, we changed the accessibility route into unit number four. So it's a ramp up into the building versus any kind of steps there, which make makes a K D A appliance. We added snow areas, collections. We have a couple areas for snow. Near building number ten and number six, and then behind number seven, and then over by unit number one. There's one comment I didn't agree with. Todd's comics, and that was again, we talked about that swell. He wanted to create a swell. Along the property line, I believe that's what he was talking about. There's already a swell there and he wanted to put a yard drain and tie it to catch basin number one. Again, we didn't want to go through and recreate something, a swell that's already there, already existing and functioning. And remove an existing natural buffer in that area. So we did not, we did not show that. So hopefully he'll agree with me on that. And the rest of the stuff is more tactically oriented and I really. Need to go into it. I talked about the drainage system being one, one, one being watertight and one not being watertight and allowing it to infiltrate into the ground. Couple of comments, you know, some great grading issues up and along Plum Trees, which we taking care of. We had another. Contour line on by building number seven. That's really in the stockpile area, which we had over the detention system. Now we just made sure that was outside of the detention area, one there. And we put one over on the the north side as well. That's pretty much answers, you know, I think we addressed all the comments that they had, and that's our site plan. If there's any comments or questions to the commission, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Doug. That's all that we have for tonight. We think it's a fairly straightforward application. We hope you agree, but we're happy to answer any questions that you or the public has.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, so now it's time to comment. Would anybody like to stand up and? Yes, please come forward. To the front, so. Catching there, name and address.
Marietta, Ohio, for Wen Widdlesy Drive. I'm probably one of the people who's going to be most impacted by this because I live at. Mountain View Estates. My unit looks directly down on your project there and. But I want to say I'm very much in support of this because I really believe we need. More affordable housing in the background. And I think this seems like a good use of that. And so. I wanted to put my comments in on that, that I supported. I do hope that the developers, as well as the creators. Will require that there's attractive landscaping and maybe. Hopefully a good buffer between. Your development and Mountain View Estates. I would appreciate that. Basically, that's it.
Dr. Wild, thirty-one, Nashville Road Extension. I have three questions just for clarification purposes.
You know, after I must ask a favor, please. After listening to many hours of videos for the last couple of days. Please come forward so you can be heard. Because I was really stressed sometimes. Thank you, Peter, for sitting there.
The existing barn on the property that will be demolished, is that correct? Okay. The small addition on the right hand side of the existing building that will remain. I'm going to try to keep the main house with the screen in porch, I believe, and the other side, we were going to keep it fully intact. Beautiful. Third question. We had talked about the old railroad bed that's at the rear, the rear of the building. A lot of people have an interest in that old chappal group. And at that point in time, you talked about the possibility of having the patios at the back of the units. Open up to that railroad bed at basically the same height. Is that possible? Was that done? Well, that's all the questions from the public at the same time. Those were the three. Questions that I had, but I want to express my gratitude to the developers of this project for for listening. You know, that doesn't happen that often, and I appreciate their their cooperation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak? Here. David, do you see anyone in the audience who would like to address this subject on online?
I don't see any hands raised at this time, Madam Chairman, but in the instance that we have new attendees joining us on Zoom tonight. If you do want to offer public comments. There is a toolbar at the bottom of the Zoom app and there's a reactions icon. You would click on that. And there would be a list of options, one of which would be to raise your hand. Raising your hand establishes a queue for us so that we we can have. Some orderly fashion for public comments to be responded to. So if you can raise your hand, that would be greatly appreciated. I am seeing two raised hands at this time, the first of which was from Paula Antolini, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Antolini. You're muted, Paula. Ms. Antolini, would you unmute yourself so you can speak?
Okay, I got it. Paula Antolini, nineteen Jacobs Lane. I'm. I guess I wasn't here for the very first meetings, but. Why is the entrance on Widdlesy Road? Which I believe gets many school buses, parents picking up children, you know, several times a day. Why is, why is that decided to be? That entrance there? Instead of Plum Cheese Road? That's my question.
Thank you, all right.
Next, I'm seeing a Diane Ryan, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Diane?
Hi, Diane Ryan, thirteen Karen Drive. My question also was about the entrance on Whitless. It doesn't show where or how far that is from the intersection. People tend to be very impatient. When they're going to school. And so I'm just not sure, you know, if there's backups there or how that works with and and entering and exiting that that area. And then the other question, I was unsure when Peter Olson was explaining. About the fifty-five and over and. Whether children cannot be permitted or whether they can be permitted or cannot be prohibited. I I. Didn't really understand what he was saying there. And then the other question was on density. I'm assuming that they decided to do it. Affordable so that they could have a higher density there. And I'm just. Wondering why they felt they needed to do that. I guess that's my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else there, David?
I'm not seeing any other raised hands at this time, Madam Chair.
Peter, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you. Uh, David, can you call up the site plan, please? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Obi, for your positive comments. To address briefly, you can see on the site plan across the back of the property. Tree line, that's an approximate location, shop by the surveyor. Our intention is to only remove the trees we have to and prune the ones that are on the property line. And there's still a significant wooden buffer on the other side of the property line. So it's not our intention to do much with that at all. Mr. Wild, again, we thank you for your comments on the existing home. We're actually going to use some of that history to name the development. The barn, which is here, will be removed. As I, as I've said, this is not a safe structure in any way. I feared for my life walking in there. A small addition on the side. Will remain, the screen porch.
Yeah, will remain, yeah.
And then the rear of the property along the back here is the former right away, the Shepug Railroad. It's, there's, there's really not much of a sign of it's there, except that it's kind of a flat space about six feet wide. And we're not really touching it. I don't know, and maybe Doug can answer with the elevation of the patios, which raised from three, range from three thirty down to three twenty-four. Because property goes sort of uphill here, will be at the same, but. I see a three thirty there, so it'll be about the same. Of that, of that right away. For Ms. Antolini's comments, if you can slide over towards Widdlesy Drive. And and maybe slide it down a bit. We only have two frontages. We have Widdlesy Drive and we have Plum Trees Road. The driveway, the existing driveway on the Plum Trees Road comes right into the queuing location for the traffic lights and. Our, our strong recommendation was. Do not put our traffic into that queuing line. So that leaves us only one option, which is Widdlesy Drive. The site plan itself shows dimensions of our property line. I don't think it has an actual dimension down to the traffic light, but. On the fifty-five plus question. It is illegal in Connecticut to discriminate against families with children in housing. You cannot prohibit. Children in housing. By law or by covenant or any of that. The only exception is if you met the criteria for a sixty-two and older. Community in the housing for older persons exemption. That's a one hundred percent sixty-two and over. We're not doing that. We're doing fifty-five and older. And as far as the density question, I went through the calculation earlier. We think based on the existing zone, we could get six homes on this property. We were asking for ten. That's what's necessary for us to make the project financially feasible. Just doesn't work till we do six. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else anyone would like to, you're allowed a second round if you care to have a second round of questions? Everybody satisfied? Online, everybody's okay? Okay, so comes to the commission. I just have, if you don't mind, I'd like to start. I just have the one. I I have not looked at the site myself. But it was before Marietta asked her question. I have, I have here on my notes. Ask about landscaping, in particular, the back of the property. You say there's a dense. Forest, okay, but is that there all year long? Would would the greenery be there or would there be a chance for perhaps a line of say maybe abiding type thing?
So it's mostly. It's mostly a deciduous forest, but it's also mostly on the abiding property. It's not on our property, and what we don't want to do is plant. Our variety or whatever in the railroad right away.
Oh, is that what's there?
Former, former railroad, maybe it's hundred percent our property, but it has a historic. A a historic value. I mean, obviously, the railroad bridge, you know, right across Widdlesy is the old bridge for the for the railroad. And so we don't want to put landscaping in the data. So, yeah, so there'll probably be very little landscaping. Maybe a a few plants next to the patio.
But will there be some sort of plan coming in before we close? Which will be appreciated.
Our hope was that we would close tonight.
I know, we don't have this commission. There are several things we don't have, so.
We determined that. We determined that, and, you know, it's very unfortunate, but we will do our best to have the landscaping plan done for the next meeting.
Exactly.
It was not our intention to do it as part of an eight thirty G application, because it's landscaping, it has no health and safety impacts, so. That's why, that's why we didn't submit a WIG application.
But it does add to the application and to the people, the neighbors and the environment, so if possible, that would be very nice. I appreciate it. Okay. Commission members, Bob Leggert? You have any questions?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question and a comment. If we go eight thirty G on this, it helps with saving the historic value of the house, the main house, is that true? By getting, by getting the density bonus, i- it helps Patrick's decision of saving that house, right?
That's true.
Okay. My only question.
Thank you, Bob. Penny Kessler?
Um, my only concern, honestly, was the entrance area. But apparently that seems to be the only place where it's possible. Is it also possible? And this, I guess, would come in the next phase, working with, you know, town architects and things like that. Would it be possible to vary the exteriors of the units? Just so that they're not, what do they call them, triplets or something like that? You know, twins or triplets, things on that order. And, um, other than that, and, and I guess I just, I guess I just wonder how come, and I know it's not a requirement, but since this is going to be new, new construction, how come the decision was made to not make all of the units ADA-compliant immediately off the bat? That's it.
Let me see if I can answer a few of those questions. First is, just to be clear, there is no further architectural review. You guys are at, this, this isn't the TOD, this isn't the Village District or the Village Center, so there's no, no architectural review. Second is, the design of the units does vary. I know we went through it pretty quickly, but some have three dormers, some have two dormers. So there is variety in, in the design of the units. For this particular development, and, and those of you who know me, know that I like different colors in developments. This one, we're sticking with all white. We think the white goes better with the historic homes. And if you try to put in different colors, it's going to offset that too much. So everything's going to be white. I forget the last question, I'm sorry.
Not the ADA compliant?
The ADA compliant, so ADA compliant units are a specific design inside that require lower cabinet heights, require wider doors. Three-foot doors, Steve?
Well, we have three-foot doors.
Okay, three-foot doors, and, and have certain design requirements, we have to show the ability to get wheelchairs around. Most of these can do that, and they could certainly be built that way if somebody wanted to. But that's not our intention at the outset to, to build any of them that way. Because.
Um, I, can I? Can I just follow up? And ask that since this is going to be fifty-five plus, wouldn't it be a kind thing for people that are going to be purchasing these, these units to do that ahead of time?
No, the answer is generally no. People don't want the lower, for instance, the lower cabinet heights, if that's not what they need, because they need a wheelchair around. But if somebody came to us and say, I need to buy one of these units and I need to be ADA compliant, it can be built that way. Structure is there to accommodate it. Just rock and put in those cabinets, because that's going to affect our marketability.
I just speak to that in regards to the, being the chairman of the Housing Authority also. In, in particular with Reynolds Ridge, we have Reynolds Ridge, there's ADA units up there, Penny. Not all of them are ADA compliant. If there's a request for somebody who wants an ADA compliant unit, we make arrangements to meet those needs by redoing one of our units if it's their turn to take a rental. But there is no, no statute that tells you that all the units have to be ADA compliant.
Alright, thank you very much, thanks for clarifying. No other questions?
Thank you. Paul Stanley?
Uh, hi, guys, great presentation. I have a couple of questions, just to clarify. Is there going to be like a HOA or association with this, or like, is it a, for lack of a better term, like a condo association?
Yes, it's called a common interest community in Connecticut that covers condos and anything else. What most people think of a condo is like a set of townhomes, but it's really any, any property where there's common ownership. So that's what this will be, that's why there's no individual lots. People own their structure.
Yep.
To, to the inside of the outside walls.
Okay.
The association will be responsible for roofs and siding and things like that.
Okay, that sounds good. Was there going to be, I, I may have missed it on the plans. Was there going to be a dumpster pad, or is, is everyone going to be responsible for their own trash?
Everyone's responsible for their own trash in their garage, and they have to wheel it out on trash pickup day.
I think it's the same over on the, the Nashville development, isn't it?
Yep.
And that seems to work fine over there?
Yes, and the association will arrange for the pickup, and it'll be part of the common charges for the development.
Alright, I think it's a, a great use of the property. I mean, I think the town needs a, a more, more fifty-five plus housing. I mean, Beth, you could probably speak to in your other, wearing your other hat, there's, I think there's a waiting list for Reynolds Ri- Reynolds Ridge. So I think the, uh, I think there's a need, and this could definitely fill the need. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Paul. Ken Parsons?
Uh, what's the plan for the existing house?
It'll be renovated. Interior.
With, with a first four-bedroom, same type of thing.
Okay, yeah, that's it.
Linda?
Development looks nice, so if it's going to be like Nashville, it, it's going to be nice addition to that area, and I am glad that you're keeping the historical building also.
Okay, so as I said, we have several things that you're, you're waiting on.
Could Steph say, could make a few comments in regards to it, too? That's okay.
Please do.
Um, just in, in regards to, there's two, outside of the technical aspects that have to be reviewed by Todd for his final sign-off, there's two other departments that you haven't heard of. One was the Police Commission. And in regards to the Police Commission, when the developer came in and sat down on their first conversation with Steph, we addressed the driveway. Common sense, any of us that go to the intersection of Plum Trees and Whittlesley, you would, you would all agree that where the existing driveway is, is inappropriate. As you go up Whittlesley Road, I don't know the exact footage from the intersection, but it's a much better location for the main entrance and entrance and exit. In the past, also, there has been some discussions on aerial towers and getting in and out and having two entrances and things of that nature. There's a hydrant that's going to be proposed there, so that really addresses the need for getting into the site for use of safety reasons and help. Thirdly, I think that with the Health Department, again, remember it's Sew and Water, the Health Department just has to sign off and say, yes, garbage is removed on a individual basis. And I think that they're just wait, maybe they need a letters telling them that. If you guys haven't done that. It's in, I know, I know. I understand. But sometimes a letter is what you need to do in order to make it blatant that this is what the proposal is. Outside of that, just for a comment in regards to the houses and the colors, better look at different colors for the horse.
Somewhere.
Some distinction.
Yeah.
Hey, Beth, can, can we not close? Can we not close the public hearing pending hearing from those departments?
What, not closing it? It's not being closed, Paul.
I'm, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, could we, is that not an option?
It's being open, staying open.
Are you asking me or are you asking?
No, I'm asking you, is that not an option?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I mean, I see no reason to hold it open if we're just waiting for pending approval from these. I mean, there's not, the garbage is taken care of their, by their own, so I don't know what the Health Department's not going to have any comment about a dumpster pad, there is none. I see no reason to hold it open.
If I can just briefly comment that we would love for this to be closed tonight, if you were ready to make a decision. Because of the lack of a second meeting in August, we'd like to get the machines going and start working out there, so we can get foundations in before it gets too cold. But if the commission's not ready to render a decision tonight, then I would say better to keep it open, and we'll get all this stuff in prior to the next meeting.
Thank you, Peter. I, I, I think it should remain open. I think, uh, all the reports is very important. Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Paul, I see no reason why we couldn't close this site. With the stipulations, it, it's not major stuff that we're looking at.
Yeah.
And as far as, you know, the, the, the single-unit garbage pickup, that's working out in Stony Hill with, you know, with the property out in Stony Hill.
Nashville.
Big-scale basis, it's surely going to work on a ten-scale basis.
Kitty, could you go back and explain why you think it should stay open? I think.
I've always believed that receiving all the reports is important to an application in my thirty years of being on this commission. You never know. Again, the simplest report could all of a sudden become something important. And you don't know. But we could, if you want to take a consensus, if that's what you want to do. We have two members who think that you should.
What are she?
I, 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 the chair, and, and say it should be main open? Or do you take a consensus?
It's up to you, if you're chair.
Kenny Parsons, what do you feel?
Hi.
What are the two outstanding reports we need?
That was from the Police Commission and the Health Department.
Yeah, I'm okay with.
Putting on what now?
I mean, keeping it, keeping it closed.
Closing, yeah.
Can we close it pending and take, take out of the ordinary coming up with the reports?
That's why my suggestion was that if we, and be eternally grateful, if you were willing to vote on it tonight, close it and vote, that would be great. Not willing to take that step and vote on it tonight, then just keep it open till September and close it, vote on it in that meeting.
I myself am not ready to vote tonight. I don't know about anybody else. I'm ready to vote on it. But as I said, pending anything coming out of the ordinary from those reports.
I don't have anything prepared for you to say.
Can I just jump in and ask again?
Sure.
Did I hear that, Peter, what are you asking of us to not simply close the public hearing, but to go into a work session and vote on this? Is that what, is that what you're asking for?
And that's what I would be eternally grateful if you would do, because it lets us get started. But the point that I'm trying to make is that if you're not ready to do that tonight, then there's no reason to rush to close the hearing. You might as well keep the hearing open to a meeting in September, when you are ready to do the work session. And then take, get all this stuff in. My personal opinion is the application's been pending since June. If there was any significant issue from the Health Department or the Police Commission, it would have gotten something to you well before tonight. Particularly since this public hearing was opened, you know, two weeks ago. So I'm not expecting anything out of this report.
Yeah, I have a good.
But, but might as well keep it open if you're going to.
It wasn't happening two weeks ago, Peter.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, it was.
It was.
Kitty, how about if we, we, we closed a public hearing tonight and took a consensus vote of approval based on positive reports or the two reports?
I'd be in favor of that. Would that, would that work for you, Peter?
Sure. It doesn't let us get our machines going, so it still brings me back to might as well just keep it open. If you're, if there's not a final vote tonight, then you might as well keep it open. That's my, my neutral opinion on it.
But taking a consensus vote actually would say prepare an approval for the next meeting.
Would be the same thing.
Since we, we don't have another August meeting, it's going to be the second week of September.
Correct.
That's right.
Correct, but Beth can be prepared with a decision that night. You know, assuming those reports come in clean. I assume that.
Yes, that's correct.
So all I'm saying is, it's, there's rushing to close it, if you're not ready to vote on it tonight, doesn't help anything. So just keep it open to September and do it all one night.
Correct. So I, I believe that's what the commission should be doing. We should just leave it open till September, and then hopefully we can do everything on, on the meeting of the twelfth.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so, um, we're going to table this until September twelve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, goodnight.
It will be a nice job of Lance.
I hope so. Because, you know, you're right, it's not prestigious streams right now, you can't see anything.
No.
But come the winter, it's bare. You know, it's bare, I can see everything, so whatever you can do.
Okay, I'll get it.
Madam, Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
For the record, I'm back.
Are, are you guys ready to move on to the next item, or is a recess needed to organize papers and such?
I think so.
Okay.
For the record, I'm going to sit Linda Curtis for Richard Tibbetts. Hey, does everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yeah, that's weird. If I can make a motion, I can do that, right, because I listen to the videos. Beth? Sorry, you know, listen to the videos, I can make a motion to approve the ads of seven twenty-five, twenty-three.
I, I have a comment.
Sure.
For the record, in the minutes, Kurt Erdy's name is spelled with a C, not a K.
Oh.
I missed that.
Yeah, but, yeah. Your name's important to some people.
So Bob, you're okay with the minutes other than that minor change?
Other than that minor change, yes.
Penny?
I'm good.
Paul?
I'll give a thumbs up.
Oh, go ahead, John.
Paul, are you okay with the minutes?
Yes, I approve the minutes.
Yes. Linda?
Yes.
So moved. We have any?
Invoices, you have an invoice for the news times for one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and five cents.
That one fifteen or one fifty?
One thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and five cents.
I move that we pay the news times bill of one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and five cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't move.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Alright, new business.
New business.
New business, you have a site plan for, from the Hub Shopping Center, which is two seventy-nine Greenwood Avenue, it's located across from the Sycamore. They are looking to add two additional, what we call pads, to the retail establishment. Standalone pads. The town has been working with him, with them over the last six months, probably more than a year, dealing with traffic, landscaping and improvements that are. Uh, landscaping and improvements that are proposed for the application. And staff would recommend a public hearing for the site plan and special permit to be held on October eighth.
I move that we hold a special hearing for the hub shopping center, site plan special permit to seventy-nine, two ninety-three Greenwood Avenue on October, and I don't remember the date. On October eighth.
Second.
All in favor?
Wait, uh, October eighth, that's a, that's a Sunday. I, I think the date you're looking for, if it's the second Tuesday of the month, it would be October tenth.
I was right when I said October tenth.
Thank you, David.
Okay, I'm taking that to October tenth.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Aye.
Work session. Twenty-two, twenty-four Nashville Road.
Twenty-two, twenty-four Nashville Road, just for the record, so you know, you have the village district overlay zone regulations. Which include the purpose, I'll give you a copy. And attached to that is a schematic. Also, after several of you have mentioned, um, topics of discussion, what I did was I took a lot of your comments and we put them together in, um, to aid you in coming to some kind of a decision this evening. You got it. Would you like a copy of this search?
Get a grant of laws for words. Okay, um, I have been going over this.
I'll correct myself, it's village center.
They wanted to change this to a village center district and a TOD district. TOD overlay district, correct, okay, so I listened to many, many comments from very many people. So I decided that the one important thing was to go back over or regs. And in reading the regs, the one thing that struck me immediately, village district overlay zone. Purpose, the village district overlay zone in Bethel adopted under authority of C T G S section eight dash two J is a set, established to enhance the historic character of downtown Bethel and aid in the preservation and restoration of its architectural assets. I do consider the home at twenty-four an architectural asset to the town of Bethel. And so to, to make this a village district overlay zone to me is it, for me, is a no-go because of our village district zone. Uh, the, the, um, piece.
Village center zone, not village.
Center, I'm sorry, village just, village district overlay zone, okay. Is what this is.
I thought there were.
They're not different, they're not separate. You have a different one, I don't.
Village center.
Okay, so what, then, though, I, I am reading village district overlay zone. Am I reading the wrong doll here?
Page sixty-four in the big book.
Okay, hold on, I'm going back. I went to page eighty-eight, which was my wrong. My wrong, sorry.
Architecture.
That's architectural review. That, that's. So that's. Alright, so hold up. The village center zone is a designated district that and you know construction in modern history, they will be reviewed by the village district consultant. So the village, the village center zone and the village district seem to be one in the same to me. I, I don't, I don't see the difference there. It is, it is the village central and the village district. And to me, that is what we're trying to define here. Uh, to me, twenty-two, uh, is, is an R ten zone. The entire area there is an R ten zone from that moving forward on both sides. And, uh, how it became, um, how it became, I'm sorry, a commercial area, I, I don't know, it's always been there from my time and I've been in Bethel since nineteen seventy-one. Uh, I don't know how it became the, uh, a commercial area, but if, if it was to be anything as far as I'm concerned, it should go back to being an R ten. Being a residential zone. As to what it is. I, I listened to everyone and that, that is my opinion. And the house, oh, by the way, the other thing, the house. A lot of, was what about this house structurally not being sound? Uh, I went over the tape twice. And Ms. Rawson's words were that they hoped they could save the house. But there was no determination as to why the house couldn't be saved. Uh, at one point, somebody talked about the house having a, um, a dirt foundation, while there are quite a few homes. Historic homes in Bethel that have dirt foundations. So why, there was no determination as to why this house might need to be saved. It looks structurally beautiful from the outside, except for all the, um, stuff that has been put on it recently. But I just, I just don't understand it myself. I, 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 and I don't understand the concept of what they want to do with this property. So, that's my feeling. Go for it, folks.
Linda, Ken?
I don't see a I don't think it's a good idea to knock down existing houses. That's, that's how I feel.
I'm concerned with the creep. If we change the zone here, does it stop here or does it continue to creep down Nashville? Paul, do you have any comments on this or discussion point?
A few.
Okay.
I, I, uh, just. I like to boil things down to, to layman's terms, you know, cause I'm, I, I'm, I'm more of a, I like to boil things down, you know? Well, you guys have probably heard me say that a few times if you haven't already. Um, so if we were to approve this, um, change, right, if we, if we approved the change into the village district overlay zone, that, right there, and I'm piggybacking on what, on what, um, Kitty was saying is protecting that older house. Because if they come in down the road with an application, now that it's in that village district, um, literally the first line is, she's correct, uh, enhance the historic char- character of downtown Bethel and aid in the preservation and restoration of its architectural assets. So, um, right there, i- if you make the change, that, that, that helps protect that home now. I, and I said this two weeks ago, I'm not ever gonna say to someone, you know, I wanna come inspect your foundation, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna take their word for it. If they wanna tear down their, I mean, there's nothing stopping them now if they wanna come in and tear down that house and just build a new house. Um, I would like, I think we're all in agreement that we would like to see that contractor's yard replaced with something better. But I, but I get the feeling we're, we're all kind of skittish about their concept. Um, at least I am. I don't mean to speak for everybody, but I know I am, when I see the application and the concept that was proposed, I was like, whoa, what's this? Um, my concern is if we deny this tonight, they are just gonna come back with an eight thirty G with that same concept. And now here we are, eight thirty G. And it is what it is. If we were to approve this tonight, then when they come back with that application or maybe a different application, um, I know I would like to see, I, I know some of you have been vocal about seeing that, that older house saved. Me personally, I'm impartial, um, if it's savable, great, if it's not, oh, well. Um, I think, you know, seem, some townhomes might be nicer, um. But I, I just think if we make the, make the change tonight, then when they come back, they're, then at least they're coming back to us, hopefully willing to work with us and not holding our feet to the fire with an eight thirty G with this huge apartment building. Um, and then if we can't come to an agreement then, then, then I guess they can always go the eight thirty G route later. Um, but I'm, I'm just being honest, and. So, I mean, does anybody else feel the same way?
Approve what, Paul?
As what?
The map amendment.
The map amendment.
Bu- both, both pieces?
Yeah.
District and.
Village center.
Yep.
Village center and the, uh, TOD?
Mm-hmm.
That's the applicant's request, right? That's the application.
Right, I, that's, but, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, approve both. And then again, hopefully, when they come back, they've, they've listened to us and, and, and all of our comments, some of the public comments. And they'll come back with their appli- application, uh, with what they're actually gonna propose. Maybe it's something a little bit more in line of what we've all been talking about. I mean, if they, if, if they're, if they've watched the meetings and have attended the meetings, they have to know that at least me, and I, and I think I can see Penny nodding her head. And I'm sorry if I'm putting words in your mouth, Penny, be, feel free to jump in, um, that I'm not in favor of that concept. And that makes me, right away, wanna say, no, I don't wanna approve the math amendment, cause I can see what's coming. But if, I can also see the writing on the wall that if we deny this, then there's nothing stopping them just to come in with that exact concept under an eight thirty G application.
Paul, I'm gonna jump in on top of this because you're, because you're absolutely right, I've been sitting here, first of all, holding my head because I feel awful. But also because everything you're saying, um, is very similar to what I said a couple of weeks ago. Um, when people show you a concept, then I think we need to believe them. They, they could have easily brought in other things. My biggest concern, and Beth, I go to the memo that you sent, um, approve a map amendment change along with some good instruction by the commission. To do, to do, to do, give the commission opportunity to work. I think we've done that many times in the past. And it has come back to bite us, um, in an unpleasant place. Um, I, I, you know, I also, I, I agree with Paul, I mean, it, it very easily, they say, okay, and we've got excuse me, the equivalent of a Motel Six on those two properties. Um, Beth, my understanding based on conversations I had with you is that they can do whatever they want with that existing house. It is theirs.
Mm-hmm.
Own it, they can pull it down and use it for firewood.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I, I just wanna make it very clear that, and I said that this is the last meeting. In many, many times, past performance is indicative of future production. And what we see going on at the house there with the way that they have poorly maintained the house there. I, I feel sorry for the, the owner of, what is it, forty, um, twenty-six or whatever it is. Um, once we, once we say yes, do we have do we have any recourse, and I don't wanna use the word character, I wanna use the word architecture. Do we have any recourse with the developer as to what goes in? Should we say yes, village center with the TOD overlay? Do we have any recourse? That's, that, I, I, that's just a question, and I'm gonna mute.
I as far as the village center with the TOD overlay zone, I look at it from the point of view of improvements that have been made along Greenwood Avenue by using that tool in the TOD area. Um, looking at two twenty Greenwood Avenue, looking at a lot of the older homes along Greenwood Avenue, it's enabled them to make further use, use of their properties um, to increase income. And at the same time, it has helped them to bring a lot of the structures back by those allowances in the village center. I also, um, looking at the TOD overlay, looking at eighty South Street. Um, and what is being built there also. Uh, so I, I do see some positives, I know that people have a lot of negatives in regards to TOD, but I always like to accentuate the positives that I have seen um, that are overlooked in a lot of instances. Uh, in regards to the village center, I look at behind this property on Chestnut Street itself. That's a village center development, um, you look at the existing property surrounding here, uh, the old firehouse. The, uh, Andrews, the Andrew Center, the old center school. They are all located in the village center zone. On the village center with, um, some without the TOD overlay. Most with, without the TOD overlay, but village center itself has enabled a lot of the uses in this area to be maintained. And along with the existing property owner, the old brick home factory, don't, don't correct me. But that, or, or commerce, the old brick factory at ten Nashville, again, it's, it's being reused as, uh, as a dwelling.
And just for my clarification, under the TOD, we have more, I don't wanna use the word restriction, but we have more stay.
More input.
Discretion.
Mission for the architecture that goes on to that property, correct?
Yes, that's my opinion.
Yeah, can, can, that, that's pretty much what I was asking. You know, if we, if we do all of these, does that give us a little more, um, hands-on with what they can do?
Gives us.
And I, I, my, my question is.
Guidelines under TOD with, with, uh, respect to architecture.
Could you back in on Paul and Penny, uh, uh, what they're talking about? Well, what's our bargaining chip to, to get this end up the way we want it to end up? When we're down the road?
If they apply under TOD, they only have to put twenty percent affordable housing, if they go eight thirty G, it's thirty percent. That's, that's the bargaining chip, that's what it is.
That's what they have, what do we have? To, to get them to get rid of the, the contractor yard and still maybe maintain the old house. We can't do that.
Bob, I don't think we, I don't think we have the right, they, they own the property.
Yeah.
That house, if they wanna tear it down, they can tear it down.
Right.
Well, if it goes through the into the into the Village. Uh, District Overlay Zone, then I believe they would need a special permit to do any special work to it. Village Center, I'm sorry.
The TOD is 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 giving him incentive to the density. To work with the town.
Maybe that's what that's what my question should be. Can can they pick up enough? Bonus density. In the eight thirty G or the TOD. To make it worthwhile for them to save the house.
Does this gentleman own? Well, he's property?
Yes, he does.
So he could go all the way from the corner, all the way up, knock that house down, and put a huge number of apartments there.
There's a property in between.
I know, he could get that too.
Yes.
So you gotta think, think about that. From the corner of wellies, all up to the house he wants to knock down could be. Fifty or sixty apartments there. And how many apartments to more apartments do we really? Some more fundamental.
And there's nothing stopping them from doing it right now, under eight thirty G.
Yeah, but we're just giving them another lot to do it on. That's my point.
He can do it on the lots right now.
And Ken, I would suggest that, and maybe this will change because everything does. Um, right now, there is a housing crisis. It's certainly throughout the United States, but it's very much going on here in Bethel and in the other smaller towns. There are not enough places for people to live. Um, and we're just seeing this. All over, uh, you know, people are constantly searching. You know, for, they're looking for homes. They wanna live here. They wanna live in this community. Um, I. Not that I'm saying that they should put up, like I said, the equivalent of a Motel Six. But. If, if doing this gives us a little bit of. There's a great English word, but it's not gonna work here. Uh, thank you. I was, yeah, so a little bit of hands on and. I I think that I think that the house. That that's a non-issue. We can't tell them what to do with the house. But if we, if we can have a little bit of a say. In what goes in there and what it looks like.
You okay, Penny?
I will be. So I'd really love to hear, you know, Ken from you and Linda.
My thought process is very much along the line of what Paul was saying. If we deny it. Undoubtedly. We're gonna be sitting here facing an eight thirty G application.
Of course, yeah.
Which we have. Little impact on. If we approve the zone change as requested by the applicant. I believe sincerely. That we will be in a better position. To work with the applicant on what actually goes on those two lots, or on the one lot, if they do, as they have said, try to save. Um, the existing structure on twenty-four. I may be in the minority here, um.
Well, thanks.
In that support. But my, my position would be is that. I would vote to approve the application.
Is that a motion?
I'm.
We can't, I don't, oh, you can just do a straight motion tonight, can't they? Can they?
We have to take a vote tonight.
You have, that's totally, you're at your deadline.
Okay, so it has to be a motion made tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I am gonna make the motion that we approve the application. For twenty-two twenty-four Nashville Road LLC. Arena and Arena Amazie. Zone change from R ten to Village Center with TOD overlay. I'd like to do a roll on the vote, Bob.
No, oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I know.
Throw it up again.
No, uh, but that is not a sufficient. Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to, um. Do that.
Probably need an effective day in there.
Hold on a minute. Uh, when you look at your notes.
Ken, if you need your second, you got one.
Some of your comments can be course. The the language that I would suggest is similar to what. You have been discussing this evening. And, uh. So your motion, you're making a motion to approve the map amendment. Uh, from the. Village set to from R ten to Village Center with the TOD overlay. Along with giving some good instruction by the commission as to efforts to incorporate the existing dwelling unit. And eliminating the industrial use. Because this will give the commission more opportunity. To work with the applicant to develop a plan that would accomplish. Preservation and protection to the existing R ten zone, but also allow a density. A higher density. An opportunity. Have a more flexible plan. Along with. The opportunity. You're gonna kill me. To contribute. Twenty percent of the units. To. Affordability requirements. Under the TOD. And I can't read this back. I apologize.
And I can't remember every word you said, so.
It's on tape, so.
So. But also with that. You have to state a reason. But that's, so, the first motion, go ahead.
That's is is Peter still here?
Yes.
Is it possible to get an extension on this, so we get the the motion proper?
I I'm not sure you're at your deadline.
You don't think we are?
When was the public hearing closed?
The last meeting.
No.
We discussed it at the last meeting.
Now, we don't have a me- another meeting until the second week in September.
September, I believe, Peter. Can I get the file?
I left mine.
Alright, so.
I just wanna make sure we get this right.
Yes, I agree.
I agree. Would you like to take census?
Yes, so I think you closed the public hearing July eleventh.
Yes.
You can't with this, Peter.
September twelfth is our next meeting.
I calculate the deadline would be September fourteenth.
That's two days after our meeting.
Do we go with Peter's calculation?
I'm double checking right now. Um, ju- just for as a point of clarification, the commission has sixty-five days to render a decision. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Just bear with me.
Assuming the hearing was closed July eleven. I just add two months here in September eleven, plus a few days, so.
We're on our work session on uh, on uh, January or July twenty-sixth.
Yes.
Okay, so. So the duration from July eleventh to September twelfth, which is when your next regular meeting is scheduled, is sixty-three days. So you would have enough time.
Yes.
You wanna rescind your motion?
Yes, I hereby rescind my motion to approve twenty-two twenty-four Nashville Road LLC. Zone change map amendment from R ten to Village Center with TOD overlay.
I would request the commission to come to a consensus to give us some direction.
Good, wanna do it, Paul? I guess Beth, you make up a motion. A draft for the next meeting.
What was that?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
I present this. Beth, to approve a letter, letter of approval. Applicant, and we. Further clarify the motion to approve in our next meeting. Does that work?
Yeah.
That's. Paul?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
In persons.
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
And Stephen Jess?
Yes.
That makes more sense to what we were trying to do.
Yes.
Agreed.
Thank you. On the agenda. Creation place, I plan special permit. For team units. Education and bill.
Friends, as much as I wanna stay on, um, I need to jump off. Have a wonderful August and I'll see you in September. It's a good song about seeing you in September. Bye bye, guys.
Did anybody else drive down there and take a look at the the mockup of the wall?
Yeah, I tried, I couldn't see it.
No.
I went to Dr. Mike's with my husband this afternoon. I couldn't find it.
That's right, tucked in next to that red, unless they took it down.
I.
I've been there. There two weeks ago.
Question points.
I I looked through everything and I read everything I could. I think it's a beautiful site. I I think they've done a fabulous job. The only thing, I wish we could have figured out that little staircase. I think that would have been absolutely perfect to go like where you're going to put, um. You know, we had to move the um, the backup for the fire truck to come down, but you're gonna put the lines there. I could just put a little staircase right there, go to Dr. But no, I I I think it's a beautiful, uh, it's a beautiful site, and I think it's very, very well done. And I I I think it's a credit. Thank you very much.
Problem with the staircase is it's a two-way staircase. You'd have people going up there too.
Yeah.
Bob, any thoughts or comments on this discussion points?
I think it's a very good project. It it fits uh, what we want there downtown. Uh, I think it it would be an asset to the town.
Um, I couldn't have said it better than what Bob just said. Um, pleased to see the uh. All the the screening that they're gonna put in front of the walls and and the uh. The investment they're gonna put in there to to make sure it's. You know, um. Hidden, I guess, as best as they can. So, yeah. I'm excited to see it finished.
For both, for both sides, don't you feel, Paul? For the people in the Dr. Mike's and uh, and. Uh, that that side, and also for the people who are gonna live in there. I think it's gonna be beautiful.
I also like how when when it's on, um. On 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 South Street, it's gonna continue, it's gonna look like just more houses.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing I will say is, uh, maybe we, um, they had mentioned something about not wanting to do anything with the existing sidewalk. But that it was, um, too narrow for current regulations. I think we should just maybe have the Public Works Department go over. Make that one of the stipulations, let them see if it's good and. If they think it needs, if it's good by them, then let it fly, and if they think it needs to be brought up to snuff, then that needs to be brought up to snuff.
Great point. I like that.
They would know better. They would know better than us.
Because Peter say that, um.
It was like, it was only like one tenth too small or some, I don't know.
Three point nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't much, but let's, you know, regulations are.
It's first class as well.
Someone smarter than me made sure that sidewalk minimum is a minimum, so.
I think also the applicant had indicated if the sidewalk needed to be replaced, it would, and the last time I walked through there by my. Evaluation, it needs to be replaced.
So let's, I think, I think that was, uh. Maybe we just let the Public Works Director go out there and and let them make a determination, and if it needs to be. Prepared to replace, then it's up to their discretion. I think it's a great use of the property.
Thank you, Ken.
Um, if we didn't have the TOD, we would never consider this project.
That's right. I'm good with it. I said I'm good with it, very good.
I think. A really nice plan, I think. Follows suit with what we wanna do, as Bob said, um. It's pleasing to the eye, and it looks just like a continuation of a residential neighborhood. I'm good.
Good, we, when that comes back to, shall we ask it for a resolution?
Uh, does she have one prepared for tonight?
I didn't, I didn't hear. When I listen, I didn't. Didn't hear anyone asked.
She was looking for something, I don't know.
Maybe she has.
Did you have one eighty-five pressing plate speed?
As soon as we're done with this.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I thought you were closing up.
Did, did, was there a resolution asked for, for, no?
No, because this is your first time here discussing, you have to close the public hearing, Ken.
You wanna take a consensus on it?
Yep. Judy Grant says yes.
Take consensus and then we'll, uh. Let, let Beth know which way to write the.
Just for. Can we vote on it and do the whether approving it, or do we?
No, I I prefer, I prefer that you come to a consensus review, whatever the decision is at your next meeting, and then vote on it.
Okay.
You've made an exception for forty-two twenty-three's vote.
Consensus for approval.
Thank you, Bob, Paul.
Consensus for for approval.
Alright. Ken?
No.
Linda?
Yes.
Ken, Stephen, Jess?
Jay Grant, yes.
Thank you.
Beth, did you get my, are you guys okay adding in that thing about the sidewalk? And letting the Public Works?
I I had it in my head anyway. I, I had it in my head anyways because they are in charge of sidewalks and inspections along the lines.
Okay.
The Public Works Director.
Excellent. Perfect.
Thank you. Do we need a, do we need a motion to add?
Yes, one eighty-five grassy plain street. JAR Associates.
I will recuse myself from that application.
Is that going to leave us with an?
You have.
Yeah, I have four. Oh, I need four. We have five.
Okay. But, yeah. Okay, I make a motion that we add JAR Associates, uh, to the work session. For one eighty-five grassy plains. Street.
Two seconds.
Site plan, special permit. Excavation.
Vote, vote in favor.
There's a vote.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? So moved.
The last meeting, you asked me to, to, um, to possibly consider.
I'm back.
We need to get some, we need to get some of your applications off your plate.
Okay.
Paul, that, that motion was just to add. The. Resolution of approval to the agenda. They didn't actually vote.
Excuse me. That motion was to add the item to the agenda.
Right, that's, that's what I meant to say.
Oh, that. Then I'm still recused. Also out.
Okay, so this is a motion here, okay?
In, in regards to the. Memo. Um. Just note that. We do have some standards that we include in here. Our standard erosion and sedimentation control. Needs to be added. Our stormwater management according to. The storm manager minute, stormwater management manual of deep, you know, we always make reference to those two manuals. And bonds will need to be posted. Um, for the excavation. The special permit excavation portion.
Oh, no.
So there's seven or eight items and.
I have eight.
Okay, the August motion, uh, the August twenty-three regular meeting of the Town of Bethel. Planning and zoning commission, an application for site plan, application for special permit, Town of Bethel zoning regulation for. Excuse me, for. For that, that two D. For dot two. B for dot four E one and six point four regarding the proposed construction of new buildings approximately seventy-five square, seventy-five thousand square feet. And fifteen thousand square feet with associated site work as shown on site plan sheet titled J A R Associates LLC. One eighty-five grassy plain street, Bethel, Connecticut. Prepared by Dynis L. Rubicus P. E. of Artel Engineering LLC dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. With revision states. May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. July twenty twenty-three and August third, twenty twenty-three, identified in the assessor's records as map ten, block twenty-three. Lot one fifty-one was approved with the following conditions, one through eight. Reasons in writing this approval, the planning and zoning commission states that proposed project will not have a detrimental effect on the neighboring properties. Or in the development of the surrounding, since the Ken Stevens planning is only chairman. Give me a second.
We have a second.
Second.
Paul, oh, you're recusing yourself? Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
And Stephen.
Yes.
So moved. Next. Any comments from the commission before we. Close for the evening?
Now I'm back.
Next, yeah. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public online?
I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright. It'll be August.
Have a good rest of the month, everyone.